Can you hear me?
This meeting is being recorded.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hello. She's in Florida. Her daughter had a baby. I hope it's okay that I tell everybody.
Right.
Great.
So when you're ready, we can invite everybody who's waiting.
Oh, are there people waiting? Oh, so they must have gotten the link somewhere. Okay. Um, yes, let's do it. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Uh, welcome to, um, the City of Livingston Planning Board, 20th, and we're gonna get started, um, with local. Stacy Jovick.
Here.
Bringing us via Zoom. Um, Taya.
Present.
John. Nothing. Mike.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
Shannon.
Present.
Misha.
Here.
Lori.
Yeah.
Jesse, okay, we're all here. Um, we're gonna move on to approval of the minutes. Um, this says delayed until May. Is there a reason why we're delaying the approval of the meeting minutes? Oh.
Welcome. We'll give you the transfer.
Okay.
I sent them to you, um, after last one's meeting.
Okay. Did they not go out to the whole group?
I just sent them immediately after the meeting to Let's see. I don't remember what's possible.
Did you guys see the meeting minutes? I remember I saw the meeting minutes. Sorry. Okay. We will delay the meeting minutes until May because
Yeah, send to you in faith.
Okay.
Have you got your camera on?
I might just pause really quick. So what's the process now that Matthew isn't here? Is, will we be, historically, we were only allowed to communicate to Matthew, and then Matthew would disseminate information out to the team. We don't communicate directly with one another. So after tonight, will Jonathan send? Okay, perfect. So let, okay, so either Faith or Jim. And then come to us from one of them. Okay, perfect. So it'll be May and April and March is
Is Julie there?
No, I don't see her. I don't think she's there.
Okay. So we're gonna start with public comments. Um, please state your name and your physical address prior to giving your public comment. Please only comment on issues that the planning board has jurisdiction on, and please don't comment on anything that is, uh, coming up on the agenda. We'll give you time to comment then. So any general public comments for the planning board? Go ahead and raise your hand or unmute yourself and speak. And I don't see anybody with a general public comment. Last call for general public comment. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Um, new business this evening is the public hearing, a recommendation to the city commission regarding the preliminary plat of Discovery Vista Phase Two. Uh, Jim, do you wanna give us a, uh, update, uh, on the agenda item?
Certainly. I'm gonna speak loud because we've got a single mic here, and I'm hoping everybody online can hear me. Uh, as stated, this is the Discovery Vista, uh, Phase Two. Uh, owners is Discovery Vista LLC, and the parcel is, uh, parcel two way certificate survey 2014. It's located, uh, adjacent to an existing subdivision, also part of the same development. They're proposing to create eighty-six residential lots. Uh, because this development was originally started back in 2009, no alleys are being provided. The developers requesting specific variants in order to match the design of the original subdivision, which also has no alleys. Uh, getting right into the findings of fact that were required to review for a subdivision, uh, there are, excuse me, I say six, that'd be seven, six different categories. The first one is the effect on agriculture. And the specific questions our subdivision regulations require us to look at, uh, starting with number one, would the subdivision remove agricultural or timberlands with significant existing or potential production capacity? Staff answer here is no. Number two, would the subdivision remove from production agricultural lands that are critical to the area's agricultural operations? Again, staff answer is no. Number three, would the subdivision create significant conflict with nearby agricultural operations? Uh, for example, creating problems for moving livestock, operating farm machinery, maintaining water supplies, controlling weeds, applying pesticides, or would the subdivision generate nuisance complaints due to nearby agricultural operations? Staff answer here is no. There are no intensive agricultural activities in the immediate area. And number four, how would the subdivision affect the value of nearby agricultural lands? My answer here was not applicable again because there are no significant agricultural lands in the area. Category number two is effect on agricultural water users facilities. Question there is, would the subdivision create a significant conflict with agricultural water users, uh, creating problems for operating, maintaining irrigation systems, or creating nuisance complaints due to safety concerns, noise, et cetera? Uh, this was addressed early on in this development, again, quite a few years ago. The existing ditch facilities affected by this project are provided adequate protection and access for maintenance, and that was done in conjunction with the owner of that irrigation facility, again, back in 2009. Uh, category number three, effects on local services. Question number one, what additional or expanded public services and facilities would be demanded to serve this subdivision? Staff answer is the obvious water sewer, garbage collection, police, fire, and EMS services. What additional cost would result for services such as streets, law enforcement, parks and recreation, fire protection, water sewer, solid waste, schools, busing, uh, including additional personnel, equipment, construction, and maintenance costs? Staff answer here is the cost of police and fire services will eventually increase as the population increases. The amount attributed to this development is integrated into our current impact fee schedule. Who would bear these costs? Impact fees will be charged at the time the building permit is issued for structures on these lots. And can the service providers meet the additional costs given legal and other constraints? And again, the city's impact fees are designed to offset the increases in costs, and were updated in 2021. Would the subdivision allow existing services to expand in use to operate more efficiently or make the installation or improvements of services feasible? Uh, staff answer was no. However, the extension of the water main to the west boundary of this property does get the city closer to looping the water system that will eventually tie in the PFL water mains and close that loop for redundancy and pressure. Uh, what are the present tax revenues received from the unsubdivided land by the city, county, and schools? Uh, that number is $6,617.50. What would be the approximate revenues received by each of the above taxing authorities when the subdivision is improved and built upon? In staff's estimate, there is roughly $200,000, uh, per year to be divided between city, schools, and county. Would new taxes generated from the subdivision cover additional public costs? Staff's answer here is that in general, it is believed that residential properties do not pay enough through property taxes to cover the costs of the services provided. However, with impact fees, it's much more likely for these projects to come close to paying themselves. Uh, finally, would any special improvement districts be created which would obligate the city, uh, fiscally or administratively? No, there are no incentives proposed for this project. Category number four is the effect on the natural environment. How would the subdivision affect surface and groundwater soils, slopes, vegetation, historical or archaeological features, and visual features within the subdivision or on adjacent lands? Would any stream banks be altered, streams rechanneled, or any surface water contaminated from runoff carrying sedimentation or other pollutants? Staff answer is no, there are no, uh, surface streams on this property. Would groundwater supplies like to be contaminated or depleted as a result of this subdivision? Again, staff answer is no. The subdivision will be on potable water supply by the city, and residential is fairly low, uh, pollution factor. Would construction of streets or building sites result in excessive cuts and fills on slopes or cause erosion on unstable soils? Answer there is no, we're, we have no known unstable soils in this area. Would significant vegetation be removed causing soil erosion or bank instability? Uh, staff answer was no. Proper construction techniques should avoid any erosion problems. And to elaborate on that, the DEQ has to issue a, what is it called, slip?
Slip permit.
Which, which is specifically erosion control during construction. Uh, would significant historical or archaeological features be damaged or destroyed by this subdivision? Staff answer is no known historic or archaeological resources exist on this property. You do have a response letter from the shipboard office pertaining to that. It was surveyed originally, again, back in 2009. And would the subdivision be subject to natural hazards such as flooding, rocks, snow, or landslides, high winds, severe wildfires, or difficulties such as shallow bedrock, high water table, unstable or expensive soils, or excessive slopes? Staff answer here is no known hazards have been identified on this property. Next category is the fact on wildlife and wildlife habitat. How would the subdivision affect critical wildlife areas such as biggie wintering range, migration rounds, nesting areas, wetlands, or other important habitat? Staff answer is this subdivision is not located within a critical wildlife habitat. How would pets or human activity affect wildlife? Staff answer is human wildlife interaction is expected to be minimal with this location, and we do have a response from Fish Wildlife and Parks that was provided that does mention, I believe, uh, potential for bears and garbage hazards. And the last category, number six, affecting on public health and safety. Would the subdivision be subject to hazardous conditions due to high voltage lines, airports, highways, railroads, high-pressure gas lines, or adjacent industrial uses? Staff answer here is no. Obviously, the railroad is nearby, but it's no closer than most other locations in the city. What existing uses may be subject to complaints from residents of the subdivision? Again, none have been identified that are particular to this development. Uh, what public health or safety hazards such as dangerous traffic or fire conditions would be created by the subdivision? Again, none have been identified at this time. So based on these findings and the, these staff answers, oh, excuse me, I'm jumping the game. We have to, uh, address the variance request first. Uh, staff's response to this variance request is while, while the subdivision standards have changed to require alleys since this project began, staff believes that allowing this phase to continue without alleys will not cause any functional problems. Believe, I added a sentence before I sent that out. Oh, it was to recognize the fact that the design of this phase is much more, uh, block-like than the previous curvilinear, uh, phases, and that that is something that is going to be required in the future, and this developer chose to, to do that in lieu of, of, uh, providing alleys. So based on these findings, and after reviewing this application later, the city's growth policy, the city planning department recommends that the city planning board recommend conditional approval of this subdivision. The suggested conditions follow. Number one, waiver of SID protests must be signed by the subdivider. It guarantees participation of all lots in this subdivision in a future improvement district for public improvements. And under current state law, it has to be specific. So this would specifically apply to West End Underpass and Front Street Extension Project should occur. And just so the planning board is aware, these, uh, conditions for SIDs expire in twenty years. All infrastructure will comply with the City of Livingston's Public Works Design Standards and specification policies. All sewer water and storm drain infrastructure will be installed with the first phase of this development. Lot fourteen B of Block Six will become an extension of Vista Drive. A secondary access will need to be installed from Meredith Ranch Road, Fleisham Creek intersection, into the subdivision. This access can be an all-weather unpaid access adequate for use by a plant truck. Number six, streetlights will be required at this development. The type and spacing will be per existing city's benefit specifications. Uh, number seven, stormwater design will meet all applicable DEQ standards. Number eight, a Montana licensed engineer or his supervised representative will be required to be on-site during utility construction. Uh, any utility reimbursement plan must be submitted to and approved by the city prior to the beginning of construction. This, many of you would probably recognize as a payback agreement, where, whereby somebody extending our utility system to the far edge of their property, if a subsequent property were benefits from that, they could theoretically recoup some of their cost. Uh, that agreement would have to be separately approved by the city commission.
Jim, if I may interrupt, is that, is that a good spot for you to maybe, uh, explain that we've requested that the water mains in Merriweather be upsized for that future loop? And what are our funding mechanism would be to pay for that cost difference?
Well, you and I haven't discussed funding mechanism that I recall. But, uh, yes, it would, with this subdivision, they need minimum eight-inch, you know, water mains, because that's the DEQ standard for a main. Uh, we are going to have them install twelve-inch water mains for that future loop because distance requires bigger pipe to maintain the same pressure and volume. So, uh, by getting this to the west edge of this property at an up size, uh, the city stands to benefit greatly in the future. Uh, financing that, you have any, you wanna talk about?
It'd be, it's, it's, uh, an impact fee. It meets the definition perfectly.
Right.
For paying for the additional capacity.
So, so they, they will pay for the cost of the eight-inch pipe that they need, and the city's impact fees will upsize that, and they will install a larger pipe. Uh, number twelve, the subdivider, subdivider will, in consultation with the county extension office, prepare an obnoxious weed plan to mitigate the spread of weeds to adjacent properties. Proof of compliance with this plan will be required in order to gain final approval. And the final, number thirteen, all outdoor lighting in this development will be required to be night sky friendly per city ordinance. Any questions?
Um, you mentioned about alleyways, that there have been no functional problems associated with not having alleyways. Just, just to be frank, the, the fact that the previous phase of the development didn't require it doesn't seem to me like a particularly, um, valid justification for not requiring it now that we do have a new subdivision regulation that requires alleyways. So if, in this circumstance, you believe that there wouldn't be any functional problem associated with not having alleyways, how would a future development differ from that? Why is there no functional problem here, but there might be, um, somewhere else?
Two things. The, one of the primary reasons for the alleys, other than additional utility locations, is, uh, garbage pickup. We're already geared up to do how many blocks of street pickup now? It would almost be a nuisance to change that format for the drivers because we have to do it from Sun Avenue all the way in. Uh, and I happen to know that we are updating the subdivision regulations. And not only will the alleys be required, but so will a much more standardized lot and block arrangement. And once those are adopted, staff will not be recommending variances for those parameters.
Oh, so what you're saying is that the, the subdivision regulations have not been fully updated to respond to the growth policy?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and I'm curious, Shannon, what your take is on, on the functionality of, of not having alleyways there?
So we met with this developer early on, and one of my stipulations on, uh, was going more to a block and grid development, which they have done. Um, another request was, uh, the previous phases, they narrowed the streets up by two feet, and I required them to go back to a full street width. So I feel like with, with the combination of this block, more block setup, and having straightaways versus picking up garbage on curves where cars are parked and such, that, um, that, that we can do fine with our, uh, street maintenance and garbage collection.
So the, so basically, the widening of the streets you're seeing is, is adding some capacity that the alleyways would, if the streets were narrower?
It certainly, when you have these curves, um, in the previous phases, and, and losing that two feet, and, and with as much street parking as out and starvation in this area, um, it certainly puts a challenge on our garbage truck drivers. Um, but having that extra two feet certainly helps us be able to navigate our big heavy equipment, not with the trucks and with snow removal equipment.
Thank you. Uh, and Jim.
Yeah.
Uh, I did have one more question. Could you, could you speak a little bit more to the SID? Uh, how that relates to a future underpass? Um, a concern that I have with this development is basically exacerbating the traffic problems with the two crossings, leading to another referendum where then the entire city pays for an underpass that is somewhat expected by the developer. Um, so I'm curious. Uh, it sounds like maybe the SID is, is a workaround there, but please explain, I'm, I'm curious.
Actually, the SID idea was part of the last referendum. There was a general obligation bond that this entire city was gonna pay, and a certain region of the city is theoretically more impacted by the particular traffic problem was going to be, uh, included as an SID as well.
Right, and that didn't pass?
It did not pass.
So there's, there's currently no plan for the developer or future residents to be paying into the, the fixing of the problem?
Correct. So basically, that's where we need to update the subdivision regulations, well, in relation to the growth policy. And I think the short-term answer is perhaps there won't be any more growth on that side.
After this?
Well, this, that, that ship has kind of sailed because it was annexed in 2009. It's zoned, it's in the city, it's developable.
If, if the planning board and commission approve, uh, the variance and approve the subdivision?
Well, that's what they're requesting, yes.
Yeah. So, um, do alleyways, I mean, since ADUs are required, or ADUs are required to be in the back of a property, do alleyways help facilitate development of ADUs? So would that be a potential impact of this? I'm not having alleyways here.
It could be, and it would be more convenient if you could park directly off of an alley. But if you're intending to do an ADU, these lots are generally wide enough that you could have a, at least a driveway and off-street parking spot near or even in front of the primary and still park the ADU?
Um, the other question I was wondering was, um, it looks like FWP requests that we require bear-resistant garbage cans, but that's wasn't one of the conditional approvals, and I just wondered, is that something we can require or should require?
We don't have air-proof garbage chairs and cans anywhere else in the city. And I can tell you, in the nine years I've been here, we don't have bear problems there as much as we do down near the Fleisham Creek corridor and Sack Park.
I think the short answer is, we could. The, the real question is, is it necessary?
And the, so, but the, um, we think that, so the wildlife experts say that we should do it, but we don't think that we need to, okay?
Oh, yeah, basically, is if
I don't think that's what they're saying. I think they're, they're alluding that there could be a bear problem, and they're recommending that we, that bear-proof containers may be considered, but we don't have them anywhere else in the city.
Would, would bear-proof containers be difficult for Public Works to, to handle?
I'll be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not even sure if they have a side-low-type container that's bear-proof that I'm aware of. It would have to have some sort of gravity-type locking system on it that when you tip the can, it would unlock. Go ahead, Jim.
Um, I just wanna follow up on the, the alleyway thing. I hadn't thought of that point about the ADUs, that's a very good point. I took a drive out to the existing phase out there, and I almost had to call 911 to get me out of there. I thought I was in a, some kind of an apocalypse-type movie. That, that is, uh, the garage doors out there are unbelievable. It's, uh, it's, to say it's honest, not aesthetic is what you're understanding here. Yeah, then I would, I would assume that the reason that was even incorporated into the growth policy is because people went out and looked at that subdivision and said, hey, why don't we put, give it opportunity anyway? Have garages put in the back? Because it was, uh, it's just, uh, it's, uh, for me, it was insulting to the City of Livingston to have that kind of future growth. Um, when there's, Livingston is one of the greatest examples of great urban design. Plus, block layout, block layout, uh, garages in the back, if you have one. Um, opportunities for trees in the front, there's sidewalks. Um, so I would be, uh, I would be averse to giving any kind of variance on that. Not requiring them to have alleyways, especially now that they're gonna do a grid system, which would facilitate it very conveniently. The other, the other subdivision with the little winding roundabouts, that could cause some problems, I suppose, with alleyways, but this one is set up perfectly for having alleyways. Another thing are the sidewalks.
Could I, can I toss up a chair?
Sure.
Jesse, I think we're getting into later board discussion on conditions and, and what we actually wanna do with this subdivision. We should probably get through the public hearing first.
Okay.
If you can hold those remarks.
Sure, sure. That sounds good to me.
I had one more technical question, um, if possible, um, about, was there, or was there like a parkland dedication? Is that, I mean, does that meet the requirements? I didn't see that.
Yes, that parkland dedication, you show on this map, is that piece up on the creek? It's actually, it's this here. And that is a twenty-acre parcel, which greatly exceeds eleven percent of this entire development.
Okay. Thanks.
The camera still isn't working.
No, it is.
She says it's still black. Maybe it's black on her end.
What's he say? It's, here's us right
Okay.
Right there.
Well. Okay.
That's bigger.
Okay. Stacy, I'm sorry, I don't know what to tell you about the camera.
Oh, that's okay. I just had a couple of questions myself, but I can't see anybody, so let me know.
You should do, I think we should, I think we should do, uh, the public hearing comments first from the proponents. Um, and then the opponents, and then we'll get back into board discussion.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good.
Thanks for your update. Good preliminary discussion. Let's open up, uh, to the, uh, public hearing, uh, public comments. We'll start with the proponents of the project. Um, I don't have a timer or anything, I guess we'll just let them, oh, you know what? Do we time this public comment?
If you want. I can do it.
Okay. Historically, we've done three minutes for public comment for the planning board, so we'll stick with that. If anybody's got, um, if anybody has a Oh, jeez.
Give me that. Okay, sorry, buddy. If you're a proponent of this project and you'd like to give a comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. And I'm assuming we state name and address for the record, please.
I'll start. I'm Chris Bedeski with Madison Engineering, representing the developer and the property owners tonight for this. Address is 895 Technology Boulevard, Bozeman. We've been involved with the Discovery Vista project with Phase 1B. A different engineer did Phase 1A. And I'm hoping I can share my screen. I think it'll help answer, or at least the question. Jim, am I able to share my screen?
Maybe.
Is it a document we already have?
So the host has to disable, allow me to share my screen?
Yeah, the screens are probably going to be big enough for everyone to see. Is it a document we already have?
Yeah, it's not letting me share my screen yet. Host disabled participant screen sharing. So if who's in...
Is it a document we have already? Is it a document that we have already? What do you want to share?
The preliminary plot. Do you have it in front of you? I can't see what you're looking at, so.
We have the preliminary plot.
All right, so the first thing I'd like to talk about is the alleys. If you've been out to the property, Phase 1A and 1B was built without alleys and then it's moved west. The layout, for example, in Sheets 2 and 3, you can see how the lots are much more, the blocks are much more rectangular, laid out more in a standard grid system. And if we start putting alleys in, we would literally lose a whole row of lots. Unfortunately, the first two phases were not laid out in kind of a rectangular, typical urban pattern. So we had to deal with putting lots in without that alley. We talked with staff early on about this. As Jim said, they're in support of that. And we're hoping that the planning board as well, obviously, it'll provide a lot more lots for the city of Livingston if we're allowed. Moving west in the future, then alleys can be added because the master planning of the site could incorporate those alleys. So basically, this is a continuation of the lot sizes for medium to smaller lots that you currently see in Phases 1A and 1B. I would like to touch base on a couple of the conditions as well. Number three, all sewer and water and storm infrastructure will be installed with the first phase of this development. Jim and I talked a little bit about this earlier today. What we're hoping is that we only have to install the sewer and water for the phases that we're building. We're anticipating four different phases of this property.
Sorry, your time is up. We hold public comment to three minutes, but thank you.
Well, but we're representing the applicant. I'm not just a homeowner. Usually, 10 minutes.
Wait, where? Does the developer?
Whatever.
Where are you going to ask the developer? Yeah, yeah. So, thank you, Taya. I'm assuming you'll be staying on with the meeting, because if we have questions, we can ask you while you're here. It is a point of order that we've held everybody to three minutes for public comment. But thank you. And please feel free to stay on the line, and if we have questions, we'll ask.
So if you wish, let them just do a presentation, so he can get all this information out.
Out of public, yeah.
Since they are the applicant, they can give you all the information they have.
Okay.
You can do this as their presentation instead of public comment.
Yes, okay. We're going to stick with public comment now. And then, Mr. Developer, we will ask for a presentation and give you longer, so thank you. Go ahead, I see somebody else for public comment. Please state your name and your address first, please.
Thank you. My name's Julie Kennedy, and I'm at 215 South Main. I'm a Realtor with ERA Landmark here in Livingston, have been for 16 years. And I have worked with Discovery Vista LLC and Madison Engineering for a decade. Would it be helpful if I relinquish my time to Madison Engineering at this point and let them?
We're going to give him a chance to give a presentation, Julie, so if you have a public comment that you want to make.
Yeah, that's too bad, because it would sure be nice to hear what he's got to say. I just want to talk about the market a little bit. And first of all, welcome the new committee members and old faces here. I just did a search just before joining the meeting on our MLS and looked at how many single-family or townhouse lots are available in Livingston currently. There are no active lots. I'm receiving several calls every week from builders and potential land residents that want to move to our community that can't find a place to live. The demand is incredibly high. One reason they get ahold of me is because of my involvement with Discovery Vista, but also because of the quality of development that was done out in Discovery Vista. I hear this time and time again. Folks really appreciate how the original subdivision was done, planned, executed, and been maintained since then by the HOA. They're doing a real conscientious job of keeping with their covenants and keeping that area, property values up high in that area. The developer has a history of really putting a lot of thought and care into his developments and maintaining the undeveloped area as he moves out into undeveloped areas. Wanted to also emphasize that the variety of the lot sizes that Chris is going to present to you is really a strong selling point for folks in this community. It'll provide the ability to, for some lower income and folks that want to have a little bit of elbow room. And just one little comment in regards to the feel of the subdivision from one of the board members out there. I'm really sorry you had that experience out there. Some folks, it's my experience working with these new buyers, and some folks really do appreciate those front-load garages, as well as folks that appreciate the backload. Think as the time goes on and trees develop and landscaping happens, those subdivisions develop a character all their own. And the obvious house does not present itself as the major concept in those subdivisions. So with time, I think that softens very much so. That's all I've got. Thank you for allowing me time.
Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome, Jess.
Any other public comment? I don't see any. Oh. Is it Jay Haas?
Hi, my name is Jessica. This is a comment more against...
Please, Jessica, first and last name and your address, please.
Okay, my name is Jessica Haas. I'm at 923 West Summit Street in Livingston, Montana. My number one concern with considering the approval of the new subdivision is public safety. I'm a wildland fire professional. My career has been dedicated to reducing wildfire risk to communities and infrastructure. The north side of Livingston is what the wildfire community really categorizes as a high-hazard zone with potential for loss of life and property due to grassland wildfires. Grass fires move extremely fast, and they can cause extensive damage, especially once they get established in a neighborhood where home-to-home ignition really creates what's called an urban conflagration. So I would like to know how the planning staff concluded on Section 4F of the staff report that states no natural hazards exist for the proposed subdivision. On page 20 of the Park County Community Wildfire Protection Plan, the area is identified as the wildland-urban interface, which by definition is where wildfires and homes can interact. Now, I can give you a laundry list of grass fires that have recently devastated communities. Most recently, in our very own backyards, the Dalton Fire, Montana, destroyed 24 homes. These are grass fires. They move fast. And one thing that they all have in common is that they're fueled by high winds. The north side's primed for such a fire event due to its location directly downwind from a railroad track. Since railroad tracks often throw sparks and can ignite wildfires. So the number one mitigation strategy for these types of wildfires is evacuation. So you have to get people out of the way fast. Evacuating the entire north side during a fast-moving grass fire will be extremely difficult. There will be little room for air, given the fact that there's limited egress options to get people out of that area. Adding additional units without creating more egress options will increase the hazard to our citizens on the north side and may result in an undesirable outcome should a wildfire happen. This really leads to my second concern of increased traffic associated with another approved subdivision. The current transportation impact study only includes the impacts of the proposed development against current conditions and does not include the increased traffic loads from all other developments that have recently been approved or are in the process of being built. There are a number of trips, when the total number of trips per day are added together for all of these subdivisions, the impacts far exceed the current study of 830 trips per day impacting the Fifth Street railroad crossing. So my recommendation to the planning board is to pause subdivision approvals on the north side until a better evacuation plan can be revisited and that the cumulative impacts to traffic and infrastructure can be assessed for not only the current, those currently seeking approval, but also for those recently approved and that are being built on the north side together.
Great, thank you very much for your comment. Right on time with your three minutes. We appreciate it. Any other public comment? Feel free to either raise your hand or unmute yourself. Last call for public comment.
There is. Can I make a comment on the last comment?
Julie, you've already taken your...
Okay.
Sorry, thank you, but you're more than welcome to submit, I guess, written public comment after this. Larry Blades, state your name and your address, please. And you're on mute, too, if you can unmute.
Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, Larry Blades, I live at 1013 Prior Lane. Okay, right on the very northwest edge of the proposed plan. The plan and everything is fine, but a lot of our concerns for the people that live up here and in our neighborhood was very well stated by the young lady that this was on. We have any types of trouble up in this area to try to get out of this area, we are limited to the Fifth Street, the underpass, or go clear by recycling. It's a nightmare trying to get out of here at different times. And even the Fifth Avenue cannot be relied upon. And I'll give an example, as today, I went down to try to go downtown to cross the tracks, the shop in the business areas. And the train comes, and it's one of these exceedingly long ones. And all of a sudden, the engines are in the middle of the train. So I think, boy, not too much longer before I'll be able to get across. It stops entirely. All of us that were in that little turn lane on Fifth Avenue to get out of there, turn on exit to go back over to the underpass, guess what we find there? One by one, of very polite drivers letting us through. But what should have been a couple-minute trip across to downtown took me 15 minutes. Now, I'd like to see how an ambulance is going to do any better. I mean, I didn't go out by the recycling plant and go out by the river to try to get back into town. That would have been my only other exit. But I also would add one other thing. When I first bought my house a few years ago, in the planning, that behind my house, there was going to be a walkway, alleyway, something else that has now disappeared. In the 2009 plan, it had a walkway there. It is no longer on any of this stuff. I mean, it goes back to 14B, an access that comes into the park. And I am a board member with the current HOA Association and on the ACC Committee. But it appears that that HOA Phase 2 will have access to the park of their current HOA. And that gives us concern, too, of trying to upkeep and stuff. Will they help within the expenses and stuff there? So I'm going to think of a lot more, other than they say the Fish and Wildlife Park. I mean, I enjoy the view to the west and understand, I don't want to stand in the way. It might be very well planned. But this morning, I had three geese walking out in my backyard. I had antelope, I've had deer, I've had elk, I've had the whole nine yards that have enjoyed looking to the west since we've moved here to Livingston. And with that, I'll close my statements. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have another comment? Anyone, if anyone has a comment, feel free to speak up with your name and your address. Okay, this is last call for public comment. Okay, thank you. We're going to close public comment. And maybe this is a good time to ask Chris to give us a presentation on his development. I'm sorry that we had to cut you off at three minutes, but that's the point of order for public comment. So if you would like to continue or get back to your presentation, please feel free.
And I apologize, I was told by staff that once you open up public comment, that's my cue to start a presentation. So it was just a misunderstanding on that. So I think I was talking about the variance request for the alley. And if you see on the preliminary plot that adding alleys in this phase, just like Mr. Blades just mentioned, he's on Prior, we'd put an alley behind his house, and then there would be two more alleys at least, and they just don't fit. And that's why we worked with staff and we did more of a rectangular layout, shorter blocks, more through streets than in the previous phases to help with both pedestrian vehicle circulation in the site. I would like to, and then ask about number four, about the condition that, let's see. I'm sorry, number three, where all the sewer and the water infrastructure will need to be installed with the first phase. We're proposing to actually have four phases in it. And the reason for the four phases, financial for one. We can build potentially two smaller phases this summer and get lots on the market a lot quicker than taking out the entire 86 lots at one time. Who knows what's going to happen next year? But we know this year, there's a huge need in Livingston for lots for homes to be built on. So we agree with Shannon and Jim to, if we do the north and the south phase first, we would loop the waterline through that to have the continuity, which is needed up there. And especially for this, it's future. And I think Shannon mentioned, we're proposing and agree with the city staff to put in 12-inch water main in North and South Merryweather Drive to allow for either future development further to the west. So we're in support of those. And we'd like to talk about traffic. I know that came up during the public comment. Sanderson Stewart, a pretty reputable company here in Montana, we hired them. I'm understanding they've worked in Livingston quite a bit, and I believe they've also worked for the city. They did our traffic impact study, and they've indicated that at the critical intersections, the level of service is C or greater. So level of service C is an acceptable level of service. Periodically, yes, the train stops and people can't get across the tracks. But according to the traffic engineer with Sanderson Stewart, there isn't any critical failing intersections at this time with this addition. And I do believe they did include the existing conditions. That wasn't, if you do have that, you can see there's some areas in north of the tracks that is being developed. So I think we need to look through that traffic study, and you'll see that they did include existing traffic as well as subdivisions that were being built. So I disagree with that person that made that comment. And for fire protection, she also brought up fire protection. I totally agree. I grew up in Montana. I've seen wildfires. I totally agree, I grew up in Montana, I've seen wildfires, I've fought them, um, and grain fires. And what you do, you, you, you provide fire protection for your home, these, these houses. If they keep trees away from the house, they plant green grass, uh, that's how you do fire protection. We have winds in Livingston, uh, I used to live in Livingston, uh, there's, there's always that potential of a grass fire starting. And that's what you do, you, you provide protection around your home, uh, to take care of that. I, I think that's about it, uh, for, uh, my presentation. Eighty-six new homes, we could probably have half of those in, uh, lots by the end of twenty twenty-two. Uh, ready to, for homes to be built on, as Julie said, uh, Livingston is, is definitely in need of, of lots for people to, uh, to build their homes. People want to live in Livingston, just like in Bozeman, it's a beautiful area to live, so we need to, need to provide for, uh, lots for them. That's why the developers are moving forward, Grace Denick as a longtime, uh, resident of Livingston, by the way, he's the one that's did. Uh, Discovery Vista Phase One and, uh, One B, uh, so he's, he's been around Livingston a long time. And he is on, he is online if you have any, uh, questions for Ray as well. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions for the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Let's go first.
Are we, are we in planning board discussion?
We are now in planning board discussion, yes. Because public hearing is closed and we have had a, our, uh, presentation from the developer.
Um, I'm actually start. I actually, as I get started. Michael, do you have capacity to look up something in MCA while I'm, while I'm talking?
I have the book.
The definition of a variance, as I understand the definition of a variance, um. It is, it is, it is offered when there's a particular constraint unique to a specific property. Excuse me?
That's a zoning definition, variances are generally associated with zoning rules. This is different, it's a variance to a particular.
So there's a, so there, you're saying that there's a different definition for variance as it, as it applies to.
This is ruled by our subdivision regulations.
So how would you define variance with, within subdivision regulation?
Deviation from city design standard.
Okay, so that, that would, that would cause a need for a variance, what is the, what is the criteria for accepting a variance?
Unfortunately, we do not have any specific criteria in our current subdivision.
So if that's the case, wouldn't the criteria for, for a zoning variance be?
They cannot cross over. From legal standpoint.
Okay, so I, um, I have that pull, it says it resulted in undue hardship. To the landowners, one of the, right, this I have, it's. The, so that's what I have here, I don't.
That's in the zoning section, alright.
Um, this was from the subdivision regulations, um, but I need to, I don't have it all pulled, I, I just like. That was copying and pasting and putting it in one document, it was just a screenshot, so I didn't do the whole thing, but it was said. So I'll just, we can just look it up, but I have it here, it's as a result of undue hardship and something else. Okay, so, uh, from my experience, uh, with planning. That's my understanding of, of why a variance is accepted is because specific circumstances of a property. Create undue hardship, which makes it impossible for the property owner to comply with the regulations. Um, I'm not, I don't know about the difference between how that applies to zoning or subdivision regulation. But variances is you don't have to follow these rules because something specific to your property makes it unduly difficult to follow the rules. That's not how I understand this case. The, the only explanation that I'm hearing for why we would offer, we would accept the variance is that we haven't done it that way in the past. That, that does not comport with my understanding of, of the criteria for, for accepting variance. Point it up, it's on page seventy-nine or on page seventy-six. Uh, that's, that's my, that's my only comment right now, so. Do you want me to read it? If Chair.
Yeah, go for it, read it, yeah.
The governing body may grant variances from section, uh, whatever. Um, of these regulations, when due to the characteristics of land proposed for subdivision, strict compliance with these standards. Would result in undue hardship and would not be essential to the public welfare, oh, variance will not be granted. If it would have the effect of nullifying the intent and purpose of these regulations, the governing body will not approve a variance unless it finds that. The grant to the variance will not be detrimental to public health, safety or general welfare due to the physical surroundings, shape. Topographical conditions of the property involved, strict compliance with the regulations will impose undue hardship on the owner. Undue hardship does not include personal or financial hardship or any hardship that is self-imposed. The variance will not cause a substantial increase in public costs. The variance will not place the subdivision in non-conformance with any adopted zoning regulations. Okay, so that seems to comport with what I was saying.
Only partially. Um, and I'll, I'll speak from the staff perspective on this, it isn't that it wasn't done before, it's due to the shape of the property. Right, that this, this portion of the property is shaped in a way that doesn't allow for alleys without a substantial reduction in the number of lots. Based off of an original plan that was approved by the city. So this particular property that they're developing now is. Built in a way dimensionally that was built for a future phase based off of previous rules. So now the undue hardship is. They lose, I don't know, whatever, entire row of, of lots.
Well, that, that says, that's self-imposed by the property owner and that.
Well, that's not self-imposed by the property owner, that's imposed by us. By allowing that much space based off of not requiring alleys prior. Right, like if they had known that alleys were going to be required, they would have left more space. So that was a previous decision by the city of Livingston to allow them to develop these phases. With their understanding that they could put another phase in. But now we've changed the rules and so this particular property no longer meets the requirements that were set. Previously, or that are new.
I, I, I understand that and I would, I, I don't think I saw that in the materials that have been presented to us.
I think that's what he just presented.
I mean, he, he showed us the plat.
Right.
The plat is not, the plat, as I understand, the plat can be changed.
I, I don't understand that question.
The, it's currently one piece of the land, right? We're talking about subdividing one piece of land, that can be done in all sorts of, of ge- uh, geometric ways.
Certainly.
Yeah, so that, it's not like those property boundaries exist right now, there's one piece of property. That can be dissected in all sorts of geometric ways.
Right, but we have minimum lot sizes. So you can't necessarily.
We have existing streets that were.
Right.
Designed in the previous phases. That they're connecting to, to this phase.
Right.
Certainly affect the geometry of how you develop the remaining parcel.
Right, and so, and, and they based it off of previous developments and the remaining property size. Because you can change lots, doesn't mean you can get the same number of lots.
Right, but that, the, the issue of number of lots. That's salient only in the amount of money that they can make and, and what we heard there.
And number of ounces they can provide.
Right, right, um, but, but the hardship there. The undue hardship is really just how much money they can make from developing a property. So I don't think the number of lots, to me, that's not particularly compelling.
Okay, but that's, and, but it's, that's not compelling to you is completely different than you can't grant a variance. Which is what I thought you were saying, that you could not grant a variance.
Well, we, I mean, we can all vote however we so choose here.
Well, no, I mean, you have to follow the rules. And if the rule said that you can't give a variance for that, that's very different than you just, you don't think a variance should be given.
Right, well, so these are the cri- these are the criteria for consideration of a variance that we just.
Yes, yeah.
So. I don't know, I think we're arguing semantics.
Well, but these are very important semantics, I mean, there's a very huge difference between you can't give them a variance. Or we don't want to give them a variance. Those are very different things.
Okay.
So it didn't, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, finish.
Well, in the staff report, it doesn't detail any of those.
Yeah, that was what I said.
Any of the reasons that it would, that we should get a variance, I mean, it doesn't. Say, yeah, so I just, it just says it will not cause any functional problems. It doesn't, so I just was, I agree, I don't see a reason for the variance in the staff report.
Okay, but we're giving you the reason now, we can add that into the staff report, so whether it's there now doesn't matter. We're giving you the information.
And what is, the reason is the physical shape of the lot?
The, the physical space left because of the previous approved phases. That if we now impose new rules on the development that was designed by the old rules. It's going to significantly alter the number of lots that are available for them to build on and for the public to build on.
And that sounds like it's a concern to the city.
It's a concern to the city staff because.
Madam Chair?
Use the. We like to use all property to as efficiently as possible, right? So what you're getting up with is if you, if you require an alley, you'll probably end up with some really big lots. Because they can't do additional lots. Or they'll come back and reduce the amount of parked land that they dedicated because they're leaving them that lots. In this case. Yeah, probably because it's not that big.
It's already been done. I mean, I think, I mean, if you look at, if you look at.
Madam Chair?
Some of the decisions made previously with, say, Gibson Circle. And, and Ordway Drive.
This is Gibson Circle, that's, that is right there.
You know, if it, if it was more of a rectangular shape. And, and all we had was two accesses on either end of the development, I, I, I can certainly see how subdividing that with. Alleys could be a benefit, but given Gibson Circle is in the previous phase and Ordway. Um, and Merryweather was, is coming off of the tangent. When we sat down with them initially. This lot layout looked dramatically different and, and they, I think, did a good part of really trying to block and grid what they have with the, with the remaining parcel.
Thank, thank Shannon, that's helpful. It's also just helpful to, to see that picture blown up and see. How it's trying to fit a block and grid, uh, network on top of a loop and lollipop, which is.
Yeah.
A suburban style development.
And I think that's one of the main reasons the staff would recommend giving the variance is because they're trying to transition, right? They're making an attempt to transition from an undesirable. Development pattern that we allowed in the past to what we have asked for. And I think they're making a good big effort to allow that transition now. That only matters if we annex more property out there and right now the growth policy would say we would not.
We would not.
Um, but it is, I think they're doing the best they can.
So is this, is this the last of the annexed?
It is, this goes up against, it's county beyond there.
Yep, so.
And, and the developer has mentioned developing west and so I'm, I'm confused. Well, because that's county and that would no longer be.
At some point, the growth policy may change and if the growth policy changes to allow development there, then this is set up to allow that development in the way we've asked.
Anixing to the west.
And it's, it's prudent to plan ahead to, in case this is developed in five years or fifty years, but it's prudent to plan ahead. For future growth.
And that's why, Jesse, if you look, I mean, they have water main extensions. On every street that's accessing that county property this time. And, and putting in that infrastructure now.
And the bigger water pipes and right of the stuff, yeah.
Jim, was, did you, I, I don't recall, did you reference the growth policy at all in the staff report?
I did not. Because our current subdivision regulations, as well as honestly state law, removed subdivision references to the growth policy.
I don't quite understand that piece.
So, so let me elaborate just a little bit. The way the growth policy statutes work in this state, they are very big picture, very visionary.
Recommendation.
Well, they're, they're guidance, they're, they're, they're planning guidance. Subdivision regulations are specific to projects. And they don't expect your growth policy to know what projects are coming in, in the next six, eight years. So growth policies by their nature are not specific enough to really address the individual developments that will come. Where the growth policy is more useful is making these annexation decisions and the zoning of those annexations for density. Because once you have. The jurisdiction for the zoning. Then you basically. Know what, what is going to be developed there, it's zoned, a certain density, it has access to public utilities. You've already pre-decided that that's where a subdivision can be. So that the, where the growth policy is critical is making those decisions and actually removing the boundaries of the city.
And so our current growth policy, which is promoting infill. And, and when, you know, you said that it may change in the next however many years, but at this point, we would not. Based on the growth policy, choose to annex any further west.
Right.
And, and I know that we're looking for density, right, so we're in full and more closer. But we also have to weigh that against some of these other concerns like the traffic, the wildfires. Um, emergency access, uh, person trails, um, wildlife. So I guess I'm just curious with this particular subdivision. I, I guess my questions aren't answered about the emergency exits. Um, I did have a, a good conversation with our interim fire chief about his feelings about development on the north side. And he said, you know, I think we should have a fire station on the north side. Where are you going to put a fire station on the north side? And then he started talking about numbers and population and number of firefighters per population and. Uh, it doesn't pan out for us, however. Not everybody considers that railroad when you're talking about number of firefighters available per whatever, population. So th- those questions I think are still unanswered for me in this. Request, I guess. Um, but I'm gonna stop and.
Stacy was trying.
Stacy was trying to say, yeah, so go ahead, Stacy.
I guess back in the discussion, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, back in the discussion on further potential, um, annexation of future land to the west. Um, I guess I wonder where, you don't know when the land will be developed or will be annexed. But when do you say, okay? Or, or can this planning board say any future, um, as a suggestion, any future phases that are done. Past this, if this gets approved, would have to follow the alley concepts. Whether it's, you know, uh. Has been written by that time in the growth policy, who knows whether, as quickly as things have been going, whether it would be in there or not. Or, you know what I mean? So that, so that the, the same discussion wouldn't be happening again in the next phase.
Do you want to answer that? Go ahead. So Stacy, I think the, so first of all, the alley requirement is already in the subdivision regulations. Uh, not all of the updates from the growth policy are in the subdivision regulations, although we're probably. Eighty to eighty-five percent done rewriting the subdivision regulations right now, um, to update them. But, um, it, and that's why, it's why it's a request for a variance now, because it's already a requirement. So that's why they have to request a, a variance for it. And in this case, from a staff perspective, because they've done this transitional piece and it's now set up. The geometry is now set up to make block and alley easily, uh, designed from this point forward and it's already a requirement before they do any of the design. Staff would, in general, unless there was something very specific, but definitely in this area, would not recommend a variance to that anymore. It's specific to this property because of the constraints that are placed on it.
Right.
And, and unique again to this property is they can't be, can't even expand to the west to provide that extra space for the alleys because it's the city limit. Um, and we would. So that's another constraint unique to this piece of property. Um, but I think those are already in there and, and staff would not, in general, and I, I, I will never say never, because you never know what happens. But in general, we would never recommend this type of variance to additional development because they would already know the requirements and. And they've done a good job of transitioning here to allow that to be designed with really not much extra effort.
Okay, I could just also see that the case could be made the opposite, well, we didn't have alleys up to this point and therefore. Um, we are hopscotching and now having alleys and it's too much of an expense to have them. Further west.
We can give the planning board. And I'm only going to load on this board, but any of you, if this is ever annexed further to the west. I'm going to be a huge advocate for alleys because they are a huge benefit. I'm a huge supporter of block and grid development. But I want to tell you, there's been a lot of developments in the last twenty years in this community that were not block and grid, between trails, North Town. Um, this development, uh, Star Edition even is that same.
That goes back to the late.
And, and so, um, I, I appreciate the developer in this situation, working with us to get. To a point that works for them for a number of lots and, and the cost that they're going to put in infrastructure. Um, you know, if you look at, if you drive out in this area, uh. There are no streetlights, um, for some reason that was another, uh, thing that was overlooked, you know, this phase is, is. Going to be have streetlights, there's certainly a cost of having that and I think it's a huge benefit to the. Residents in this area and, and we hope to continue to. Make that happen throughout, but you know, we're in a real interesting time period in Livingston of the fact that, um. We, we have all been very integrally, integratively involved with the growth policy update. Um, and we have, we have some situations where our city limits allows for development proper. For development projects like this and, and we. All the recommendations from the growth policy have not been put in our regulations and policies at this point.
Right. So let me ask this, I know there's more development coming, you mentioned, uh, that there are not sort of this alley, uh, block and grid. Uh, style development in North Town, yet we know it, we know that these subdivision regulation or these reviews are coming our way. So I guess just what I'm hearing is this is, this particular case is sort of special, uh, because of the. Design, but, but if we have another one before us, do you anticipate wanting another variance for the same rea-? You know, do you see this coming up again with North Town if they, even though they haven't yet, right? That whatever it's called, Sweetgrass or they, they did not do that, but they're gonna. We're, we're assuming.
The topography challenge, and I don't want to get off topic too much on different developments.
Right.
State task at hand, but if you look at the topography of what the city annexed at North Town. And the open space areas they're proposing, it's going to be tough, really tough to have.
So it just sounds like this is going to come up again.
And, and I, and I, I'll just tell everybody again, just from a public works perspective. If, if you really drive out Star Edition, first phases of Discovery Vista. Um, they do bode some challenges, um, for maintaining the infrastructure and providing city services and I do feel like. You know, truly this is an improvement, it is more of a block and grid. Um, and again, you know, we're having to. To maintain things from previous decisions that were made in our community, I, I personally feel like this is a good compromise, um.
What, what? Sorry.
I had a mic. So, um. I, I was kind of looking at this and I, how wide are alleys, is the right away for an alley?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet. So if you were to look at this development here. Okay, and if you were to put an alley here and have it come all the way on the back of these lots here. And then do another lot here and then put a street here, we would lose nineteen lots. And I believe that. As much as I'm not a fan of these types of developments. I do believe that the layout of this looks like they are attempting to transition to a grid pattern. A pattern that will have, um, alleys and streets and I think it's. This is, I think that this is a good compromise for. Housing that we need, it looks like on the south side that these are smaller lots, I'm not sure if these are duplexes, but I. If you look at the lots, um, um, that are existing on the south side. They're all duplexes that go all the way down and looks like they're, it's a semi-mixed use. From larger lots to some duplexes. I think that this is a good compromise for attempting to provide more housing that Livingston really needs. It's questionable, even with the duplexes, whether they qualify as affordable, but. The more housing we have, maybe the more affordable things will become, I mean, it, it's part of a supply demand issue that we have. We have a high demand for homes and a very small supply. And I think that's a really big issue that we have that. I, I mean. This isn't my favorite layout, but. I do believe that it's transitioning into something that is what we want as a city to become eventually and. There'll, there's going to be pockets of the city that don't conform to what we all like or want. But I think that this is a good, um. I think they're transitioning into something that is more aligned with the growth policy and what we want as a city.
Um, Jimmy, you talked about, uh, like the original intent of the alley. Of the alley requirement and the subdivision regulations that, that sprung from the growth policy. Some of us were part, part of, of those discussions, I was a big proponent of, of the alleyway requirement for, uh, the subdivision regulations. A big reason for my support of that, um, is as you, you were talking, you, you were talking about urban design. Um, and having, having. Automobile infrastructure like garages oriented to the back of a property and bringing. Um, the facade of a property forward towards the street, um, is good pedestrian oriented design. You, you're, what you see on the streetscape is, are, are spaces made for people, right? And human scale means moving at a, at the pace of walking and so forth. So that, that kind of urban design promotes, uh, walkability, pedestrian and bicycle activity. I, I've, I've studied a lot of this, this is kind of like my, my bread and butter and. One, one thing in research that we look at is, is self-selection bias in those studies. So a lot of times when you, when you see that kind of urban design. The people that are gravitating to that urban design are people who want to live somewhere where they can walk and bike. So when we're doing, when we're doing empirical research, we see, oh, this. This type of urban pattern is really facilitating higher rates of walking and biking. Some of that is actually due to the fact that people are choosing to live there because they already knew they wanted to walk and bike. So if we think about that in the context of Livingston. And I, I'm somewhat playing devil's, or I'm, I'm somewhat playing, uh, advocate of a side that I have not been arguing thus far, but. If we think about the context of Livingston. Folks who are, who want to live on the far northwest side of Livingston are likely to be people who. Are interested in driving or are less interested in walking and biking because it, you know. If you, unless, unless you're moving here with zero context, which I was actually one of those people who moved here with zero context, but, um. If, I mean, if you look at a map and you see, okay, here's the grocery store, here's downtown, my house is all the way over here. You're, you're, you know that you plan to drive to the grocery store and downtown, so. To some degree, I think that negates a little bit of the, the necessity for that, that kind of urban design. Now personally, I'm a huge proponent of that kind of urban design, that's the kind of city that I want to see. Um, but just from a, from like a practical standpoint. Someone who's considering buying, purchasing property on the far northwest side of Livingston, I would imagine is. Is already, knows that they're going to get around by, by car. Um, and is therefore not going to be offended by seeing their neighbor's garage right at the front of, of the street. Um, and again, like. My aesthetic preferences I think are very similar to yours. Um, and those aesthetic preferences. Lead to, or are in line with urban design that, that would promote walking and biking. This context is like a little bit different than where we might ex- expect that to be more effective.
Madam Chair, yeah, I appreciate that Tori, and you know what's interesting about this part of town and this area? They probably have, they have the best sidewalk continuity than anywhere else in the city.
Yeah, that's great.
And, and so. It's, it's ironic that you would say that they're more prone to driving, but they have the best sidewalk connectivity network. To get to downtown than where else in town.
That's fantastic.
Mm-hmm. Jonathan.
I would also add that if you walk there, you get blown away. So you can get blown to town and away from town, depending on which way the winds are blowing.
Stuff going on out there with the park, go ahead.
Um, so I, I wanted to talk about the, the variance and that because I think that. My main concern is that it wouldn't facilitate ADUs, which we need, um, to help address the housing, the affordable housing, uh. Crisis because it's a very good way to actually help make things affordable for people. And I think that it would be detrimental to the general welfare by not allowing ADUs. Um, and so I think that that would be my opinion of it and I think that, um. What Tori just said about. What, what Tori just said about. That, about allowing, um, about people being likely to drive in that area. I think that people live there because they have to, so a lot of times I think it might be an equity issue. Because I think that people, I mean, if that's like where it's affordable to buy, then. And because it's far away from everything, then people, there might be more of an equity issue and not necessarily. Uh, people like to drive issue, but they are forced to drive by living out there. Um, the other concerns that I had were, um. I was just thinking that ADUs, um, could potentially, well, I, one of the things I was curious about with the staff report and wanted to bring up. Was, um, it says. That in general, it's believed that residential property doesn't pay enough through property taxes to cover the cost of services provided. Um, so this doesn't seem like it would cover the public's costs in the future. Because we know sprawling development eventually is more costly for a city than. Um, than infill and I was worried and I was thinking that not having ADUs and not having that additional, additional density will. Lower the property taxes potentially from that area. The other concerns I had were, um. I think that wildfires are a significant issue and I think that we should require, um. And I think that it sounds like it will affect wildlife because according to F W P. Um, dogs might, uh, chase wildlife and there should be a requirement for bear resistant garbage facilities. So I think that if we are going to continue with that, we should make sure those are, uh, conditions.
Okay, can I clear, make a couple of clear mind comments?
Yeah.
Uh, and Jonathan, I'm not sure if you meant it when you said this, but it wouldn't prevent ADUs.
Oh, it would, yeah, so it would make the ADUs less likely, uh, because. Uh, the, uh, because alleyway design facilitates AD, the ADUs more easily.
So the only thing we'd really do is provide easier parking for the ADUs. Um, and I think I would just do the math and say. How, what percent do you believe would develop ADUs and then does that equal nineteen lots? Um, because that's the trade-off, uh. And I think, I think addressing the wildlife issue, um, and this is.
Yeah, well, you can.
Um, but the off. There may be, hmm, need to be reconsidered, right? Because. I don't, the assurance of the wildlife is probably more in the park area than in the residential area. Uh, and that's one of the cities' awfully shared areas currently.
Hmm.
Well, I, I was, I've had bears in my yard on Sixth Street and on Eighth Street in different places, I'm sure that there are bears out there.
Hmm. Um, I wanted to follow up with Jim because you did make a recommendation about a secondary access to address emergency services. Where is that? And, you know, could that potentially?
Okay. So, to this intersection.
So we have a, we have a easement for Meredith Ranch Road. It comes from Fleshman Creek all the way to the railroad tracks.
Got it.
And that's where the Bozeman Trail.
Hands come out here to get us to.
And this, I think this goes towards, it's aiming towards where the PFL driver comes out.
You just can't get over the.
Right, yeah.
Railroad. The, the block is, so, so even if you can come out, so. You could come out to the nor- to the west and head north.
Mm-hmm.
Out of that subdivision, um, because there is currently, uh, a little access road, they'll just have to develop that into a gravel. You're, and then you'll come out on Fleshman Creek, but you're still going, so then you go past the cemetery and then you still either end up on. Fifth or Fifth, depending on which way you go. So it'll be, it'll be a traffic jam. It'll be a traffic jam.
I have a question on that. It, Taya, I didn't mean to interrupt you, are you done with your question or?
So, so with that easement and access. We would just, there'd have to be something over the railroad, is that, or it's already there?
No, the access would be off of Fleshman Creek.
Yeah, okay, gotcha, okay. What about going all the way around? If you go up Meredith Ranch Road and around, is that ever a possibility? It doesn't, but you, it could, couldn't, isn't there supposedly some sort of like road that may?
There's no easement to make.
Oh, there isn't, oh, there isn't, okay.
If, if, if we were to develop that. That would provide economic incentive for development to happen between where it is now and that access. That would be, that would be the city facilitating further northwest.
Okay.
So like, from, from my perspective, any, any crossings of the railroad should be. No further west than existing, than existing.
You were talking in north route, right?
I was talking north, yeah.
So in the opposite direction up to Max Road, which comes in by, um, Redakers.
Oh, like so going around?
I was just thinking for emergency exit reasons, you know, um. And I'm thinking specifically fire because emergency vehicles, that's. Way too long, but if you wanted to exit, uh, do you want to address that, the emergency?
What are, what are your questions?
I, I was just curious, so I guess I, um, I also see. The addition of more houses and traffic if there is a wildland fire, uh, situation. Evacuating that area seems difficult given the current number of res- residents, let alone adding another eighty-six plus. So I'm just curious, even with this access out of the, um, Meredith Ranch Road. The block, the, you're all still siphoning into either Fifth, Main or. Than it. So.
So sort of, but not really, um, so there's, I think there's at least three separate issues here that often get mixed together. And that's traffic, the train, emergency response, and then wildlife. So I guess that's four, that's even more than three. Um, and each of those are a very different.
Scenario.
Yeah, very different topic and are driven by very different things. Um, so as, as far as traffic goes, and I think the traffic study shows this and, and most traffic studies. That we have done show this, there is not a traffic problem. All the, all the intersections work at acceptable levels.
It's a waiting problem is what you're saying.
Um, so on a, on any given day when there's not a train, everything works as it's supposed to work. And the wait times are well within tolerance for. Traffic in there. So that's, that's the traffic issue. The train issue is a completely different issue, it's mostly behavioral. Um, I've lived on the east coast and watching people drive. Anywhere that might open up when there's a traffic jam, it is amazing how many people will not go. To Bennett Street to cross when there's a train stopped on Fifth Street. Um, or use the underpass, like there's, there is a significant. Behavioral component to people not being willing to go around.
Well, you can't get there anyway, because all you've got is front. Well, like even if you wanted to, like if you're live, if you live to the west of Fifth.
Mm-hmm.
You can't get over there anyway, you've got to wait.
Um, as long as you're, as long as you can get to Chinook, you should be able to.
No, you're gonna wait.
Traffic is typically stopped heading south and across the tracks.
I don't know, I've sat in it a lot, I live on Eighth.
Right, so do you, I mean, have you tried going across on Chinook?
You can't get there, you can't, if you're on Chinook. You, you, or, or front, you can't. Be, until everybody goes right on Fifth, you can't keep going, you just can't, you could go up, so, believe me.
That, that is, that is exactly by point.
Just can't get over.
Is everyone waits at front and Chinook for Fifth Street.
Or you wait for everybody, or people scoot around like three or four cars and then go down Chinook. So, and that's really scary, right? But they're doing it, they'll go around it because they don't want to wait at Fifth.
But the, and that's exactly the point, is everyone's. But the, and that's exactly the point, is everyone's waiting for Fifth instead of moving down.
Well, you can't, well, the point is you have to wait at Fifth because you can't go straight until people, until enough cars go past.
But that first person could.
No, they can't. No, well, yes, I guess the first, but then they get stopped there. Why do I, that's all aside, but.
Well, but that's, that is all behavioral, right? That's not actually the infrastructure. That's, that's people not using what's already there.
I guess.
So that's, that's the second issue. Um, and we've actually looked at ways to make Front Street. If you look at the projections, it actually does at one point get to an E. Is it an E on westbound Front Street in the evening, peak hours in the evening, which is below below acceptable service level. And so there are things we can do just in the traffic design phase of that to encourage behaviors that help the traffic flow. Um, a real easy one, and these are all just ideas. We're not doing anything at this point. Um, you can make Front Street from Fifth to Main one way, and then that traffic would flow to the underpass naturally. Uh, and you wouldn't have people coming up front trying to take a left across traffic on the Fifth Street. So there's, there's ways to address the traffic even as it grows, right? So there's things that can be done. So that's, that's traffic and behavioral traffic. Um, when you're talking emergency response, we also don't really have a problem with emergency response.
Unless there's a wildfire. I guess that's my biggest concern.
We'll get to wildfire, but I'm, I'm just trying to walk through all the different scenarios. Um, right now, both police and ambulance and fire response to the north side is not delayed in any way. And we do have protocols in place. It's hardly ever a problem to get to the north side, right? Like that's usually not the issue. It's coming back from the north side. So we know when, when units roll to the north side, that we have X amount of time to solve the problem before they try and come back. Now, especially when we're talking ambulance, it's much easier because they're going to the hospital, so they can certainly use the Bennett Street. Right? They can get to Bennett Street and that's hardly ever blocked. Um, and they go ahead of time. When we roll to the north side, we almost always use the underpass. Um, all the vehicles can get through the underpass even when it's, has water in it because of the height of the vehicles. None of them have a problem getting through there. We've tested that at max height. Uh, we also have an agreement with M R L, soon to be B N S F. Um, we have a direct line from our dispatch to their train dispatch uh to notify them that they have to move a train if it's blocking. And we have emergency response. And they actually are really good at responding to that. And we do that occasionally. So we also have that in place. Additionally, if for some reason we just need to get a lot of traffic through the underpass, the police department knows when fire, not necessarily fire, really ambulance is the only one that's going to have to come back. If they need to direct traffic before the ambulance comes back, we also have those protocols in place. So we have multiple protocols in place to mitigate the risks that come with only three crossings back to the other side. So then you get to wildfire. Um, I don't think this particular development is at any more risk than any of the other developments up there currently. Um, Bridgeview Trails might actually be the one I would worry about the most uh because it's almost wholly surrounded uh by fields. But evacuation from there, actually, there's more options for evacuation than there is for everyday traffic. Uh, in this case, there's no reason that eighty-nine North or in, in this case, Old Clyde Park is a super valid option for people evacuating, right? So you can get to the west end of town and then go north, uh which will take you out to eighty-nine North and then you can go wherever you need from that point. Um, while this uh exit may or may not be helpful in getting you to the east side of town, again, it depends on where the fire is coming from. I think as, as stated, the most likely source would be the railroad. You actually, if you evacuated to Fleshman Creek and went west, you would go to the west of the fire and even if you're not, can't necessarily get out, you could get to safety. And then once the fire was contained, then you could come back. So there's evacuation routes that you wouldn't think about because you think you have to get out of town, but really you just need to get out of the way of the fire. Um, and if that's a ranch of Fleshman Creek Road, then that's a ranch of Fleshman Creek Road. Um, same with Meredith Ranch Road North. There's several escape options that way, and they're not out options, they're escape options, right? And it depends on the fire, which direction it's coming from, how fast it's moving. But it's not necessarily a requirement to cross the railroad and get south of it. It just depends on where the danger is coming from. Uh, and then you would, now, might that be an educational process that's important for this neighborhood? And maybe we should work with the H O A to help them understand what their escape routes are? Absolutely. And I will tell you, if, if for some reason you had to evacuate um to the south, if the fire was coming from the north, the current um Meredith Ranch Road access, that's our right of way, does go all the way to the railroad and I think you have to open four gates, you can get across the railroad into Highway Ten. So there are actually several options you wouldn't usually consider, but that's probably an education process to make sure that people know they're there. And just to, to work with the landowner to understand that in an emergency, people may need to evacuate.
South.
South.
Yeah.
Um, and then, then you actually could get over the tracks. It's an accurate crossing. It's a maintenance road. It's not a great.
Oh, it is not a great crossing there.
Yeah, it's actually a railroad maintenance path.
Okay, so you'd work with the railroad to hold the trains to let the people through. Okay, okay.
So there's, there's different options. Now, obviously, if the fire's coming from the south, that's not helpful. But that's where the northern escape routes might be more helpful. Even, is it Sunflower? It's the sunrise. No, not sunrise. The one on the edge of Bridgeview Trail, between Bridgeview Trail and North End. Seanie Trail. There's a skip out there to the north as well. It doesn't connect to anything right now, but it just depends on, on how, how fast you need to get out of the way of what's coming. And with the strong west winds, it's unlikely it's going to spread north, but those are all options that are out there. So those are four very different issues with four very different, I think, explanations. But there is, there has been thought that goes into that. And so when you see that staff doesn't see it as a problem, it's because there's a lot behind that, right? And it's not necessarily related to this subdivision. That is related holistically to the north side. I mean, if we could have a, a fire station on the north side, would be absolutely, but we would. That's probably an extra, not a construction, just an operation, an extra million and a half a year, just in, in manning another station twenty-four seven.
Given the increase in property taxes and such, that's not.
I mean, we, it's two hundred thousand from this, but that is, that two hundred thousand goes really to maintain that, right? And that's, and, and I guess to speak to the property tax issue, there is probably no development in Livingston currently, with maybe the exception of Eagles Landing, that is dense enough to pay for itself in property taxes. And not even in the places that are free. It's just Livingston is not built to that density, especially as costs increase. It will always take additional money from taxpayers to do large projects. Like there's just no way it's gonna uh per, even at the, even if you go back to the early nineteen hundreds, when these projects were initially done, they were almost all done with special improvement districts and additional taxes. The, the property tax rate in Montana is just not high enough unless you are super dense to pay for itself. So there's, I it would be very unlikely that you will see a development that will pay for itself in property taxes. And that's just the Montana tax.
Yeah. Okay.
Did that answer your question?
I think so, yes. Um, it's seven fifteen P M. Do we need five minutes? Anybody?
I just have one more question about the uh where does the twelve inch, from the eight inch to the twelve inch water lines take? Where are they put in?
It would just be for this phase. So. From the phase line to the city limits uh to the west.
Okay.
Do we need five minutes? Okay, we're gonna take a five minute break. Um, we will resume at seven twenty-one.
Now you're.
Okay, welcome back. Seven twenty-one. Um, okay, we're gonna resume board discussion. Mike, you had a question?
Yes, um, so what is the threshold for um, this might be a Shannon or Jim question, but what's the threshold for ADU lot size?
Uh, any lot that's big enough by the zoning to put a primary dwelling in, you know, it can have one ADU. So if it's big enough for a duplex, theoretically, there's two possible.
Okay, um, so is there a way that we could encourage um the builders to add ADUs to some of the bigger lots?
I was gonna ask.
To, to increase the density?
Let, let me ask this question because it's curious. This is Zoned R two. Would anybody want this Zoned R three, given some of the traffic concerns we've heard and all are aware of? So why would, I mean, is it the best place to encourage ADUs? We obviously don't disallow them because it's Zoned R two, but do we really want three hundred and seventy-two units out there?
Uh, if, if I might add, I think the larger yacht lots are likely going to be purchased by folks that want to have single family homes and not.
And put their trailer and boat.
And not share that space with someone else. I think um typically ADUs are, are used to add density in a place that was really developed originally as a single family lot. And then you're kind of after the fact adding density there in a way that um, you know, like, for example, my house was, was built in nineteen twenty and it was built for one, my lot was built for one house, but maybe I would put an ADU because I either want to supplement my mortgage or I want to add density or whatever. But in an R two, you, the, if, if the develop, and again, these, these things are also um influenced by the market, right? So like developer is gonna build what they think they can get the most money for.
Right.
Um, and if, if, and I, I think a developer would, would be likely to get more money for like a, a town home than like a single fam, they might have a harder time selling a single family home with an ADU in the back than they would selling a town home. Um, or, or do, not a town home, but a duplex. Because R two allows for two, right, two residences. So they could put a duplex there. Basically, ADUs is, is typically used to like retrofit something that was originally built to have a single family. Um, that's not to say.
I mean, it just seems to me though, if, if, if someone had an eight hundred square foot um place that they could rent out, that could help pay for their mortgage also. I mean, it's, I mean, I can see, I mean, there's been lots that, I mean, I'm a non-freeholder. And one of the things that when, as I've been looking for homes is would it be beneficial to find something that's a little more expensive that has an ADU in the back to pay for a good portion of my mortgage? So I mean, it's just a thought.
We don't hide the fact that you're eligible.
Adam, chair.
And I hope that, you know, the real estate representatives, you know, act in their own best interest and advertise that as well.
Before you want to kind of address this question, I don't think it'd actually answered your question. I think we talked a lot about whether or not we want ADUs. But the actual answer is no. There's nothing we can do to encourage, I shouldn't say that. There's nothing additional we can do to encourage the building of ADUs. We've already set up the city code to make it as beneficial as possible and as easy as possible. We've reduced the impact fees. Uh, we've let it happen on almost any, any partial that can have a primary dwelling. We allow them to be attached or detached. Um, we've made it as easy as we can as a city. There's no other incentives that we can offer to allow, to encourage people to build ADUs. We've pretty much done everything we already can do to encourage it.
Gotcha.
And so I think that actually gets to the heart of what you're asking, right?
I'm just gonna like nail this, this point down a little bit further. Um, the, the market is really like what's gonna produce. We have, we have a zoning code that allows for it. And the market, it like, is, is going to, is, is going to decide really where they go. My understanding of the market is out there is like the last place that that ADUs are really gonna happen. And they're probably gonna happen closer to the city where the market creates a higher value of real estate closer to the city. So it's, it's, it's easier to maximize your profit in the most prime real estate in Livingston, which is not.
Right. I mean, I agreed. I, I, I just, it was just something to, is there a way that to just increase a little bit, a little more density to this? You know, that's was my thought. And the fact that we, we struggle with rentals here in town, regardless of whether it's the outskirts of the city limits or not.
Hold on, Stacy first one, Jonathan. Go ahead, Stacy.
I was just trying to help us move along from this point because we've got some other things, I think, to talk about. Um, and because I think that it's, ADUs are not prohibited if you so chose to put it in that area. Um, so I think we should move on to another topic.
Okay, thanks, Jonathan. What's up?
Um, I think that we're talking about a variance here um that would be a, it would be, it's different than what we say is best practices um, which are alleyways. And one of the benefits of that is ADUs. And so I think that that's just like having those alleyways helps you sell to ADUs. So that's just gonna be my point.
Anybody else have any comments for discussion?
Board discussions in general or on that topic?
We, you, board discussions on, on this, on this agenda?
Manager?
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I did. I.
Hold on, there's a motion on the floor.
One second.
Okay, discussion.
I didn't get a chance to give my feedback on a couple of other opportunities, two other topics.
Why don't you go ahead now, there's a motion in a second, but you can, you can give your, your feedback.
All right. Very quickly. I wanted to know whether there could be a transit stop put into this. Like for the Wind Rider. Built into this plan, this phase, since there isn't any as of now. And I'd like to hear from Chris, I guess, Vadaski, if that's an option. Whether you put it in a cul-de-sac or you make another place. But for the very points we talked about earlier about bringing people in closer to town.
I'll just say really quickly. Stacy, I sit on the Wind Rider board, oh, so do you. Two of us, two of us planning board members sit on Wind Rider board. And I know, and Chris can answer this, however, I, my assumption would be there is a stop out by Ridgery Trail right now. And Kristen Galbraith is our. Chair, Executive Director, thank you, Executive Director for that. And so she is very good at. Requesting stops at any new developments or new businesses or locations that are not on the current fixed route. So, I, you know, Chris, you can answer that question if you know what the Wind Rider is.
Thanks, actually, there's, there's a perfect location for a traffic, excuse me, a bus stop on the northwest corner. Because there's an eight foot wide, all views trail being proposed from north to south. So on that northwest corner adjacent to that eight foot wide trail would be a perfect location. For a bus stop. We could put it right in the boulevard between the curb and the, the trail.
And is that something that goes, could go in as the development goes in? It goes in, or is this something that the Wind Rider would come in and propose to after the fact, after something is built?
It would, it would go on after the fact. I was on the streamline board for eight years, you don't wanna put bus stops in that aren't maintained or used.
Okay. Okay, and my. Other question was. Chris, this is for you, I think. My understanding is the back road off of Fleishman Creek that my battery died. So you may have already discussed this while I was getting reconnected. But is there any way to upgrade that from kind of a semi? Dirt road that goes up and over the culverts and, you know, so that that would be a way to have it a more. Permanent looking road to access the Fleishman Creek Road as a, another way to get in and out of that phase of the subdivision?
Well, currently, that's one of the conditions of approval. Is to upgrade that road for a fire truck, fire trucks weigh 50,000 pounds, so it would be a pretty healthy road.
Okay. And I didn't, did I see anywhere what the actual impact fees were gonna be?
I don't think so, there was just an estimate in the staff report. For the taxes, but not the impact fees.
Impact fees can't be calculated until you actually know what's being done.
Well, as long as they're single family dwellings, they will all be the same, they're roughly $13,000 a copy.
Sorry, $13,000 per what?
Single family home.
Oh, for, okay, and I'm, and are those impact fees paid by the person buying the lot or by the developer?
Builder.
Generally, you say this of ownership, the developer, the builder, and then the homeowner.
Okay. And what's to prevent? You wanted to do the phase A and B. To begin with. So what is the timeframe for, or are you under any restriction to continue to do the, the remaining phases? In a certain number of ti, of years or time?
The preliminary approval is good for two years. And if it takes longer than that, they'll need to come back and try to get an extension from the city commission.
Two years to do all of them, or the first two?
Everything contained in this preliminary approval, which is the entire project.
Okay. So the entire project, all of the stormwater and all of the city water and sewer has to be done within two years?
Unless an extension is granted.
Okay. And is that extension granted by the city or by the planning board?
By the city commission.
By the city commission, okay. Okay. I think that was, those were all of my questions, thank you.
Any other discussion on that, go ahead Taylor.
Oh, I was just gonna make a general comment, I know. True point, it's not the, the most ideal setup, but, but I do see it as a dramatic improvement from what was already viewed several years ago. And it is 86 homes in the city hooked up to city services that could otherwise be built. Outside of the city and county where there is no zoning. And then we've kind of encountered that problem, we were trying to avoid the sprawl.
I'll just add. I, I think Ted makes a really great point, and that's like something that. Is just kind of a difficult, a difficult place that we're put in, in the, on the planning board in general. Is ensuring that the growth that we see within the city is happening in a way that we think is, is sustainable. Follows the growth policy. Reflects the, the desire for infill, infill and, and avoiding sprawl. A lot of us would consider this, this expansion outward, however, it's already been annexed. So it is already part of the city. But this building outward into, into the prairie on the northwest side, a lot of us would see that as sprawl. And, and I think, I think we could spend. Ten more meetings discussing like the merits of, of the design. But. At any time we make a decision. To, to not allow development in the city. That's potentially pushing that latent demand out into the county. I think that was a big reason why we got so much. Support for our growth policy and so much input by county residents was they wanted to see whatever growth happens in Park County to be, to be. Enjoyed by a city folks here. And that's a whole nother discussion. But, but that, but that's a reality that we face. If we, if we aren't facilitating development here in the city. It's possible that that latent demand is going out into the county with currently very minimal regulation. So. I, I, I'm sympathetic to all of the views that we, that we, that have come across the table today. And I just wanted to reiterate Ted's point, it's, it's a very valid point that. Any decisions that we make here to, to put off or to disallow development, it's possible that's happening elsewhere in the county. And that, that does go against. The, the main tenants of the growth policy that we, that we created a year ago.
Jonathan.
I think that's a good point, and I think that this is, I appreciate the effort by the developer to. Make it more consistent with the, with what we want. However, I still think. We're not saying no based on subdivision, or we're saying no because, or the reason I oppose it is because of the variance. I don't think that it's worth not having alleys here. I think that alleys, we've decided as a city are best practice and we shouldn't abandon that. They, and I don't see any reason to abandon that. I think that I don't really necessarily trust the, the back of the napkin math on the housing, on the number of lots. And I just think that we should have, I think it's, there should be alleys. And I don't think that 86 new homes built in this way that. Are gonna really help the housing problem whatsoever, so.
I agree with what Jonathan just said. This, I, I. I, I can see the point where people might think that, well, there are 86 lots that the realtors are chomping at the bit to get into. Those aren't gonna go out in the county. It's like a fear certainly, but they're the best. Opportunity for this kind of development is in the city. And so my recommendation would be for the. Developer to hire a designer. And design that subdivision so that it facilitates all those slots with alleys. And accommodates that. Cause right now, there's nothing there, it's a blank canvas. This is not, nothing's been done there yet. And there's an opportunity for this to be reconfigured and. Incorporate all of those things, cause I can't, I just can't in good conscience. Regardless of what was happened before and this and that and all this. The, the people have spoken, the community has spoken. They asked for a certain way to develop, to grow within the city. And by giving a variance to that right off the bat is not a good precedent to set for. Our new beautiful, highly celebrated growth policy, so. I would be probably not gonna agree with the variance for sure.
Any other comments? Okay, we're gonna vote.
Could you restate the motion please?
Did you catch it when, do you wanna read it out loud? Or we gonna, Shannon, say it again?
I didn't catch it very well.
Shannon, will you say your, will you make your motion again, please?
I.
Need two votes, one on the variance, one on the conditional approval.
Okay, we're voting on your motion. Do you want us to restate your motion?
So my motion was to approve the overall subdivision. As presented to the commission, I did not make a motion on the variance, so. The variance need to come before the, generally would, yes.
Yep.
So.
Okay, so we can't vote on Shannon's motion?
So, I'll, I'll make, I'll substitute my motion. I move that we approve the variance request. As presented in the preliminary plan.
To remove the variance request?
To approve.
Oh. Do we have a second?
One second.
Okay. Any discussion? Alright, now we're gonna vote, did you hear Stacy?
I did, thank you.
Okay, how do you vote?
Four.
Uh, two.
Against.
Mike? Or? Jim?
Against.
Shannon, four.
Misha?
Four.
Tori?
Against.
I think I'm also against. One, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, five, so the motion passes.
So then we need to vote on the variance.
That was in there.
That was a variance.
Yep, that was in there, okay, so the motion passes. And?
So now you're voting the whole subdivision.
Preliminary approval.
Oh. I don't like to make a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve the sub, the overall subdivision, provide a. Recommendation to the city commission to that effect.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Misha, seconds, okay, Stacy, did you hear that?
I did, thank you.
Okay, would you like to vote?
Sure. Four.
Taya, four. Jonathan?
Against.
Misha?
Four.
Jim?
Against.
Jonathan.
Against, yeah.
S, Shannon?
Four.
Misha?
Four.
Tori?
Against.
And I'm against, but it still passes.
Do I get to vote?
Mike?
I'm for.
I know, sorry, okay. Sorry, motion passes, one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, yes. Okay. Are we done motioning and passing on that?
For this, for this agenda item?
Alright, good discussion. Congratulations Planning Board on our first subdivision review. Next up on the agenda is?
Actually, can I just chime in on some planning updates for you?
We, we're moving into old business public works update, is that, are you, is this a staff update?
It's, yeah, it's kind of more of a, a planning staff update. So I just kind of wanted to give you guys a update on where we are as far as, as looking for a planning director. Cause that's obviously one of our major items right now. We did interview a candidate today, it was a very good interview. I think of a nicely qualified individual who is somewhat local, so housing shouldn't be an issue, which has been a problem in the past. We are extending an offer and we're hoping to have an answer back in the next week or so. That being said, I, I have asked the zoning commission this and I will ask you this as well, but hopefully it won't be for as long as I thought it was gonna be. Before we, obviously we have to do the. Statutory things, but before we make any changes or pass anything up to the commission, I would request that you wait till we have a planning director. So the new planning director can review those things, whether that's changes to the subdivision regulations or whatever you guys are working on. But hopefully now we will have a planning director, I don't know when he'd be available to start, but in the next 30 to 60 days, I hope, is where we're at.
So this is what was in the works, so you're saying that we should make our recommendation to the commission?
No, 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 it's statutory and, but I'm saying anything optional, I just, yeah, because I'd really like the new. New staff to be involved in that development so that he's up to speed on everything and so on.
Okay.
And it shouldn't be a significant weight, I hope, I hope he accepts the offer.
Great. Okay. Okay, let's, thank you. Let's move on to public works update.
Alright.
Ready? Study? I don't know.
We have a lot going on, but first thing I wanna tell everybody is. Cross your fingers. Chuck Raymond and Pete Shuman have been operating our wastewater plant with just the two of them since mid-March. And we're very hopeful that we have two new operator in training starting hopefully mid-May to late May. One is relocating from Florida and moving to Willceau, the other is trying to find property or rental. But. Really struggling two people to run a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation, so hold on. That being said, a lot of exciting projects. Our 6th and 7th Street project is slated to start actually a month earlier, but we're looking at starting in, in mid-May. So we're scrambling trying to get the. Property owners on those six blocks on 6th and 7th between Calumner and Geyser. Letters out explaining the project, the schedule. All that, working with the school district on a 20-foot utility easement for the sewer extension to the civic center. And hopefully Sac Park, Miles Park, get three septic systems offline and under our city sewer, which is great. Those that aren't, haven't heard, but our, our application competitive grant applications for number one. So it's looking very good for our Green Acres Montag subdivision sewer extension project. It gets 165 homes off the septic systems. Let's see here. FedEx is, Jim granted a building permit, I think a week ago Monday. So moving forward on that, the building structure and utilities there. Sounds like PFL is in discussions with Jim on looking at. Some further development in that area. Starbucks is moving forward with their site improvements, Eagles Landing. Tri-Tip is, I think they're hoping to have some of the first round of homes completed by mid, late May. And they still need to finish paving their street. And they still need to finish paving their street and do some track script trail repair on their route, trail. We have the, the Howe property annexation that was approved by the city commission last night, so we will be working with them on what development plans are for that property, as is the Laren annexation on Love's Lane. Uh, more than likely that's going to go through the site plan process. Let's see, we met with the developer that did the Fairfield project, and it sounds like there are plans for a second hotel to go in on that site.
Dang.
Um, working with Chris Allezinski on the Aggronies Building and, and putting in apartments at that location. Those are some of the big things. Any questions on any of that?
I couldn't hear who you just said, the, the Zinski Apartments, what was that?
Chris Allezinski owns that property.
Which, which, which property?
The Aggronies.
Oh, Aggronie, okay.
Funky building downtown, elevator, yeah, or the Wilson Booth Places.
The other big story I just want to tell everybody is we start our citywide spring cleanup next week. And as of right now, we have one part-time seasonal out of seven total that we have the ability to hire, so we are going to have another season, it looks like, of very short staff and having our full-time employees do all the mowing, maintaining, street maintenance, puddle patching, so we're going to continue to do our best, but it's going to be tough to meet our level of service goals that we have in place.
And I just want to piggyback on what Shannon was saying, you kind of, I think you undersold the grant for Green Acres. That's a $2 million grant, and it's going to cover more than 50% of the construction cost uh, for those residents, so that's a huge deal. And, and while I acknowledge Commissioner Lyons said all these decisions are hard because there's 100 competing priorities, right, like there's, you can, you can find seven things that contradict with each other. Uh, I just wanted, the, one of the updates we gave in the city commission meeting was, is the city, just the city, has lost 34 employees that we've offered jobs to because of housing. It's a, it's a real need, and so if you, if you don't think that there's real impact, there certainly is. That's, if you consider that, that's 34 employees we've lost, we only have 88 employees. We had, so to fill a handful of positions we've had to go through almost is half of the entire, you know, population of employees in the city. So it's a, and I know that we're not the only place feeling it, every business out there trying to hire people is, is going through the same thing. So these are, these are certainly tough decisions, and I appreciate you guys taking the time to discuss all of the issues that we're thinking through. I know it's not satisfying not to 100% agree, but that's, that's the form of government we're in, and I think you guys did a great job of debating it and really talking about the issues and taking public comment, so I just want to thank you from the staff perspective, that was really nice.
Yeah, team. Okay, thank you. Um, we are on to planning update. Jim, do you have anything?
Oh, me too. As Shannon alluded to, the PFL project will likely be a subdivision. I think where they're building FedEx, part of that infrastructure is a loop road that goes through the center of that property and back out to their existing street, and I believe they're interested in creating lots along that all the way around. Uh, if that's the case, we will be getting that information probably not this coming month, but perhaps as early as June.
Okay, thank you. More comments?
I have comments, just back to what you just said, Jim. What we were just discussing here was the potential for further development or for the potential for, you know, there was talk about in the, in the report that, you know, no alternative transportation and all that stuff. Well, if PFL developed the FedEx thing, that could become a node, if you will, or another hub that could have all kinds of stuff in it, that this subdivision or all that whole north area could have access to. Easy as any, there could be obviously.
Transportation state that we did, what, 2018, 17?
17, yeah.
And that, that was the whole point of the valid issue for the crossing, because if you have that connectivity, all these areas are easily accessible
Right.
from each other.
Yeah.
We know one thing for sure, we have to loop the water to PFL. And we have 15 or 40 acres of Jessen property that's annexed into the city. That depending on how it is, well, if it's highway commercial or mixed use, I mean, a dead-end water main is not.
Is the Jessen property on the same side as PFL or is that on the top? So where is that, that's annexed into the city, that's past this development?
Which development?
The one we just talked about.
Yeah, it's all south of the railroad. It's down Highway 10.
Oh, it's south of the railroad but north of 10? No.
You know where the MDT maintenance guard is?
All the way down on the right, like if you went straight instead of, yeah.
That west end road?
That's all annexed.
That's, that's the north boundary of the Jessen property goes to the highway.
So that whole triangle that goes out is in the city?
To the west end.
Well, I'm glad we're all here. Planning board members. Do you have a comment, Stacy?
I said, we're all here except for me.
You're here, this is how we do it now. You can be anywhere on the planet and we'll still have you.
I'm down here in Florida. Tennessee, Florida.
You have any comments, Stacy, before we wrap it up?
I'll, I'll just say thanks everyone for a good discussion, I think we did a good job of like, I feel like everyone brought their views to the table and their views were respected, and it was a really good discussion.
We're a good board, we've done well. We've done, we've done a lot together, and now we've got some new people, and now we're doing a lot more together, so let's just.
It's amazing how much we have done together, but yet this is like the first time we're all together.
Quite literally. First time we're all actually together.
It is.
Yeah, well, anybody else?
So, so I have one, one question then. You were saying that to wait for, so are we not having a meeting next month? Because the new person potentially would, would not be here yet?
We'll have another meeting, Stacy, he just meant if there's anything that we, off the, if there's anything else we wanted to bring to the commission, he's asking us to wait to do that until the new staff comes on.
Okay.
And then hopefully we'll find a place to live and accept our offer and show up next.
I think it might be a reverse commute.
Whoa.
Can you hear from both of you?
Whoa, oh, great.
I'm totally kidding, totally joking. We love everybody, especially planning staff. Okay.
So, my own chair. I, I don't know, I'm assuming we are just going to plan on having a meeting in May, but I'm just curious if if anyone else would second with having an agenda item just to look at basically the city limit map and look at these areas that have been annexed and not developed. And looking at the adjacent development or a previous phase, because we're going to be in this similar situation potentially with some other developments coming up.
Yeah.
And I, and if we can have group discussions on that, I think that would be a benefit to us.
Do you want to do that in your, in your, as an agenda item, do you want to give that update to the, I mean?
I, I think it probably, I mean, if we can do it in person and, and we have a whole functioning TV, it might be as simple as just pulling up the city, the city zoning map or, and looking at these undeveloped parcels that are within the city limits.
Excellent idea.
Yeah, I agree.
Is the, is the housing action plan, is that supposed to be the next month's agenda? Thought I saw that from the Housing Coalition.
I don't write this. I haven't seen it.
Decided.
Are they, are they done with it?
Yeah.
It's still in, ready to move to county tomorrow, that's why I was thinking it'll be here next month.
Jim, are you writing the agendas?
Yes.
Okay, so I think we can put Shannon's requests on there to type, to look at the annexed undeveloped properties. And then if the Housing Action Coalition is ready, we should put that on there too.
Find out for sure, and you can be there.
Awesome. Anybody else? Okay, that's Jordan, 7:57 PM. Thank you, Stacy, for making it. What time is it in Florida, like?
Yes.
Waking late. Oh, the Panhandle?
No, but there is central time zone.
You're in the Panhandle.
You're in the Panhandle.
Yeah, like even the Fort Walton Beach area or Central City.
Right, Stacy.
Stacy, only one more meeting.